I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, March 26, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald. Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Understood.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
City Manager Rick Holden. City Attorney Ashley Smith. The Deputy Clerk is present, Madam Mary Weybuckorum.
Thank you, Dylan. We are going to start with our invocation given by Pastor Joe Bryant of Grace Baptist Church and our pledge led by Commissioner Tapley.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys for letting me be here. I just wanted to let you know as members of the National Alliance here that you're praying for my numerous churches in this town. And I just want to understand that there are a lot of people with you on their mind continually.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you guys do to keep on board like this needs to be. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. We give you thanks for all you've done for us, and we thank you for watching over these commissioners as they go about their responsibilities. And thank you for your grace and your mercy. God, I thank you for your forgiveness, but thank you for your great love. God, we ask for forgiveness so that our hearts and minds might be clean tonight for what they have to do tonight through all the things that's going on. We ask for unity in the decisions that are made. We ask for truth and be taken care of in all the decisions. And then understand that there's some firefighters that are going to be sworn in. I'm asking a blessing and protection over all the firefighters. We're concerned about all we see around us, and we beg for your intervention in places where immorality and destruction are prevalent. We pray for these commissioners, that they be given an extra amount of wisdom and discernment this evening. That they have a clear and open mind to work together to keep this community an attractive and good place to be. We hope for so much good in the presence of all the evil that's around us. And then, Lord, I want to step out and say thank you for the moisture, thank you for the beauty of the mountains, thank you for the joy that you give in our lives. Help us all to have a good Easter week. Thank you for listening to us. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you leave? I guess you left, aren't you? Okay. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald and a second from Commissioner Robinson. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries seven zero. There you are. Thank you, Pastor Bryant. Sorry, I didn't see. Where did he go? Sorry about that. Thank you for that prayer. Next, we're going to move on to something very cool. I always think it's cool. We are going to swear in some firefighters and staff tonight. And we have Judge Overstreet here. And where's our chief at? Oh, there you are. Hello. Can we start with you? And you can introduce everybody. I know you're being sworn in as well, but if you'd like to tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Goodness, Mayor. Thank you for attendance tonight, citizens of Alamo Gordo. This is a big special event for us this evening. We've got a lot of new faces coming on board, and so getting everyone sworn in tonight is a great venue and having everybody do a public prayer. So thank you for everyone coming in. So we have, immediately to my left, starting on the back row, is Deputy Chief Liam Laschley, Fire Inspector Michael Lucas, Lieutenant Tom MacGarros, Firefighter Flores, Firefighter Leam, Firefighter Marcus, starting back up here at my upper row, Firefighter James Warford, Firefighter Elias, Firefighter Julie, Firefighter Leo, Firefighter Jacob Lawrence, and then kind of back here behind this back row, we have Firefighter Tom Simmons, Firefighter Brett Harrison, John Stewart, and Lieutenant William Stagg. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Chief, are you ready? Stand here, we project. Aye, simply just say something, raise your hand. Say your name. As the fire chief of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
The chief of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the laws and Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of fire chief of the city of Alamo Gordo.
Of fire chief of the city of Alamo Gordo.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Deputy Chief. Is that on you, please? I agree, I am. Aye, say your name.
Aye.
As the deputy chief of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
As the deputy chief of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of deputy chief of the city of Alamo Gordo.
Of deputy chief of the city of Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Fire inspector. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Michael Lucas.
As the fire inspector of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
As the fire inspector of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of fire inspector.
Discharge the duties of fire inspector.
The city of Alamo Gordo.
Of the city of Alamo Gordo.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, say your name.
Aye, Tom McPherson.
As a fire detective of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
As a fire detective of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of a fire detective.
Discharge the duties of a fire detective.
Of the city of Alamo Gordo.
Of the city of Alamo Gordo.
To the best of my ability. So help me God. And we'll give another break. The next one will be the new firefighters. Lieutenant, not lieutenant, judge. You're not being sworn in?
No, we're not.
Okay. That's the right call. There you go. All right, so what are we going to do? I say your name. Don't come back to neighbor. Just say your own name. Aye, everybody raise your hand. Aye, say your name.
Aye.
As a firefighter of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
As a firefighter of the Alamo Gordo Fire Department.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
The ordinances of the city of Alamo Gordo.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge the duties of a firefighter.
The city of Alamo Gordo.
The city of Alamo Gordo.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody, and congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, one more time. Congratulations, everybody. I think it's pretty big to see that many firefighters being sworn in, so it really is a kudos to the department. That's great to see. Okay, we are going to move on to public comment. I have two people signed up. I have, first, we're going to start with clearing out this room, apparently. So give us just a second. Want to clear out a room? Be done, right? Just kidding. Okay. Sorry, I didn't want any distractions, Scott. All right, Mr. Frederick, come on up. Scott Frederick is going to talk to us about the Honor Flight return.
All right, thanks again for the opportunity, Mayor, Commissioners, few new faces. I hadn't seen them last time, so congrats. Thanks for serving on the Commission. Year and a half ago, the city supported us with an Honor Flight return from El Paso. I'll briefly get into that. I know I got three minutes. To support veterans, mostly Vietnam-era veterans, one Korean veteran this time. There are four local Vietnam vets, one Korean vet. As you know, most of you are old enough to remember, not the best welcome home that those soldiers had. There's probably other vets in here. I know a couple of us that got the good welcome home when we came home from combat. They did not. Honor Flight fixes that, or it appears, or it attempts to fix that hole in their heart, where their country that they fought for welcomes them back home. So nonprofit Honor Flight of Southern New Mexico and West Texas partnered with our nonprofit U.S. Veterans Motorcycle Club. Support of many people, including the Hundred Women Who Care, who donated a large amount two years ago to enable the initial part of this. We support members local here. We escort them back from El Paso. So what does that mean? Guys get to ride motorcycles, which we love. Patriot Guard Riders, Jim leads us in a truck. Hopefully, we can get escort from the Sheriff's Department or the APD back when we get into town. We worked with Patreons Hall. Ryan went there yesterday, talked to those black, and have reserved that at no cost to us to have a small reception like we did last time on New York Avenue. The goal being bring these veterans home through their hometown and welcome them, hopefully with some of our new firefighters with the big flag on New York happened last time, with the police escort, so they truly welcome back into their community as returning veterans from a long time ago. Most of them are 70-plus to 80-years-old at this point. So that is the mission of the Honor Flight. We have support from the base. They're going to provide a van, and hopefully a driver, if not one of our active-duty members, will drive the van. We will escort them back with motorcycles and hopefully pick up an escort on the south side of town and come into New York Avenue. So what am I saying? That's 27 April is when we're doing that, about 1,900 hours back to New York Avenue. Obviously, weather, airplanes, vehicles involved, but it was pretty tough timing-wise the last two times we did this. And I know some of you were here last time when we did that, and I appreciate the Commissioner and the Mayor that showed up. We will be there at about 1,900. A small reception. It is literally welcome home. Thank you for your service. The welcome home to Vietnam veterans is a huge thing. That term welcomes them back, because they didn't get that. You guys have seen and read history and lived through it, of the spitting and the cursing and all the welcome home they got last time. This is the right way to do it, and hopefully you guys can support that. Thank you for your time. Sorry, 1,900 will be back here. They arrive at 3:50 at El Paso, then we will pick them up with the van and then escort them back here. But they'll arrive back in Alamo Gordo for a local reception at about 1,900 on New York Avenue is what we plan, right in front of Patreons Hall.
And it's the 27th?
27th, yes, ma'am. They go out at about 2:00 in the morning on Thursday, spend all day in Washington, D.C. Sorry, Thursday. Yep, and then spend all day in D.C. and then fly back. It's tired elderly people, but their eyes are this big and excited when they see the reception. And the El Paso reception is impressive, thousands of people.
Okay, and, wait, I'm a little confused. You said the 27th of April.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a Saturday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They leave early, early in the morning on Thursdays, spend all day on Friday.
On Friday, and then come back Saturday.
Go to the monuments.
I gotcha. Okay.
And then fly back, and then hopefully receive them back here.
Okay, perfect. It was a lot of fun last time. It was exciting. It was exciting to see our community come together. And of course, our military partners from Holloman were there as well, and it was fun just to sit and talk to some of our veterans. So if you can make it out for that, we need that community's support because they deserve it. As Scott said, they didn't get that the first time. They need that now. And our community is all about military. So if you can make it out there, come and join us. It is a lot of fun. Okay, and next we have Diana Saxon, and she's going to be talking to us about ordinance and business license. If you want to come up and state your name for the record. I know you've probably not spoken in front of the Christian before, so state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, thank you.
My name is Diana Saxon. I'm a resident here in Alamo Gordo, and I'd like to address an issue. I've looked at the city ordinances. Can you hear me?
Can you bring that microphone to you? Just, there you go.
I've looked at the, hello.
Is it on?
We believed it was, but give us one moment to double-check on that. I'll restart the timer.
Well, I could be allowed now.
We're recording, so we need it in the mic. Yeah, there you go.
I've looked at the city ordinances regarding the business licensing, and I need an answer, please. In how you can allow a business that has no state or city license to advertise a business name, telephone number, state license on their company trucks as well as online. The city knowingly has local consumer complaints of hundreds of thousands of dollars on this company. My loss is $30,000. The city received a short version of complaints filed with the state of 10 pages. The state is beginning a criminal investigation because of this false advertising, which the city is aware of. Does the city need to amend the ordinances to allow a similar action? Advertising is intent to sell. Did I make myself clear? Advertising on a company truck is intent to sell. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Payne, can we give a brief pause for a moment? Our BITS personnel is still trying to figure out the situation with the podium microphone.
Okay, I'm not sure that we're going to need it anymore, are we? I don't think that we will, but if you want me to, I can pause.
No, by all means, let's continue until we need it again.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We only have two items on there. Does anybody have anything that they want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Aye.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We have nothing removed from consent agenda. We're going to move on to new business. Consider an act upon approval of the annual reports from the city boards and committees for fiscal year 2024.
My apologies, Mayor Payne, but are we going to do the city managers' reports?
Did I skip it?
Yeah.
You don't have anything to say, do you?
I really don't have a lot of information. I have nothing.
Fine, let's move on to the city manager's report.
That would work for me. I did visit with Senator Burke today. He had had some calls and questions about the Benita, Benita Lake, so I just thought I'd give you just a quick update on that. We're still a long way from that lake becoming open to the public as a camping area, but we are very near arriving at an agreement with the state's fish and game group to get some fish in there. We've got to determine whether or not the lake will support the fish habitat. We don't know that yet. Even though the water seems good, the quality's good. We don't know about the food supply in that lake and all the things that go to make those fish grow. So we're working on that agreement, and as soon as we get that done, hopefully the fish will be able to be put in there. And so I'm going to say potentially sometime during the summer, we might be able to get people in there to do some fishing. The state will do all of the signage. They will provide a game wardens. They will provide folks that will keep an eye on the bars itself. They will have arrest authority and everything that they would need. We would probably need to at least have an employee out there to keep trash picked up as we need to. But anyway, I just wanted to give you kind of a quick update on that. Again, it's probably two years at least before we're going to be back into camping, et cetera. And I don't think it's going to be the type of camping that maybe it used to be, but the Commission will certainly be involved in that as we get into more of the planning. So wanted to give you that update. The other thing that comes up frequently lately is the pickleball courts. And I'm sharing with you guys about those, and we're getting closer to that. As long as the weather is still staying down, where we get below 50 degrees, they're not going to be able to put that surface back down. And so you're probably looking at somewhere in April, by the end of April, going into May, once that temperature gets above 50 on a consistent basis, and they can put that surface down along with the striping, painting that go with the courts, and it should be ready to go. The lights are up, the nets are up, and I know we're getting a lot of questions about it, and we'll make a big deal out of it when it's, when it's ready and have some kind of a grand opening. The big pool will open somewhere around Memorial Day is the scheduled, the scheduled opening, so looking forward to that. And we will bring you some additional information on, on the potential for the natatorium. We've got some information to share with you that Stephanie will be getting ready to send out either late this week or early next week about some of the different structures that you asked about in our, in our first meeting. And we've also been spending a lot of time with bond counsel and looking at financing options and things like that. So we'll get back on that track for Commission to start making some decisions as we move forward on the, on the pool issue. That's all that I have for, for tonight.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Well, I would have been okay if you wouldn't have asked.
Now, listen, these people are serious about their pickleballs, so we needed to know that. You think I'm kidding? I am not. People are vicious. Like, well, get it up, I promise. Okay. All righty, so now... Do I have a motion to adjourn? We are at that point, right? Please stop me if I'm wrong.
You're on item four.
Apparently, it's been a day for me. Today was my Monday, so...
You're on four. You're on item four.
Actually, your remarks and inquiries.
Oh, so we didn't do that yet. Okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay, I'm going to start back over tomorrow. Okay. Move on, on to new business. Item four, consider an act upon approval of the annual reports.
Marked from the Commission.
Anybody have any remarks?
Good lord. I'm going home. Somebody want to take over? Anybody? No?
You could do it.
Okay, fine. We're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Oh, my gosh, I am a mess tonight. I know, I know there are people online laughing at me right now, and I can almost tell you who they are. All right, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything? Anybody at all? After all that, that's why I didn't say anything. Okay, well, let me just tell you that I think a few of us did attend a housing summit last...
Thursday.
Thursday. It was interesting, but I will tell you that in the morning, the, one of the first speakers, Amy, I don't remember her last name. I thought she was really good. I don't know what you thought, but I thought that I probably gleaned the most from her. And she was with the governor's office, and they have some kind of, she has some kind of special committee that she's put together to address the housing shortage. It was interesting. What I will tell you about housing is when, I got the impression from that meeting that, that housing shortage, they were only including, like, low-income people. And I think that they missed the mark a little bit. I know that the Mortgage Finance Authority was there, and they gave us some statistics that I did question because I don't think that they were correct. And so I questioned it, and I think that they completely missed Holloman Air Force Base. And they're, they paid somebody to do some kind of a study, and I think they completely missed Holloman Air Force Base. So I thought that was interesting. But the reason I bring that up is because there was a meeting, and it is to make sure that everybody understands there is still a housing shortage. It is, you know, I mean, I, we, we all like to say it's all over the country, and it is, but I'm not near as worried about, you know, Arizona or Texas or, as I am about Alamo Gordo, New Mexico. So, so it's anyway, it's just something to be mindful of, that we are in a housing shortage, and that's housing across the board. It is not just... I told you, it's a bad night. This is a bad night. That's not just low-income housing, but that's housing in general. The other thing that came out of that that I got... affordable housing is four or five hundred dollars a month for rent. And those days are long gone. I doubt they will ever come back, and so redefining affordable housing, I think, is a big issue. So those are the two things that I got out of it. The rest of it, I really didn't get a lot out of, but I appreciated their efforts in putting that on, so...
I'd like to make a comment. The mayor from Rialdo spoke, and because of the fires that they had last year, that community had to come together for housing. A lot of people lost housing up there. They were in trailers, they were in hotels. But the city of Rialdo spoke with the governor, with the county, and with other agencies in the state to make sure that they worked on the housing problem in Rialdo. Very impressive mayor, cares a lot about his community, and his message was, yeah, there's a housing shortage everywhere, but if we work together, agencies, officials, all those people who really care about their community, a lot of effective decisions can be made. And they are slowly but surely solving many of the housing problems up there because of the fire that they had in Rialdo. So they had to do something, and so they pushed very hard to have a collaborative effort with several agencies, with state officials, and they're making progress. And it was inspiring to hear him say that if we work together, we can make a dent in this problem.
Yeah, it was interesting to hear what he had to say, but again, it goes back to, you know, defining affordable housing because when I asked him, the village of Rialdo is in a public-private partnership, and they're bringing in these modular homes, but when I... But he's going... But they're for rent, and they're for rent for people who have income. So they're not available to, you know, people with... That don't have jobs or that are low-income. They have to meet a certain income requirement. And again, when I asked him, well, how much are you renting them out for? They were twelve hundred dollars a month. So it goes back to that whole, is that affordable housing? In this day and age, that may be affordable housing, but I don't think it's what people are thinking of when they think of affordable housing because we're used to those, you know, four or five hundred dollar a month rent. Those days are gone, and so that... It was interesting to hear what they were doing, but I think that it may meet a certain need, but I think in other ways, given our community dynamics, given our, you know, different groups of people that are needing housing, it may meet one of the needs, but it doesn't meet all the needs. And so, yeah, we still have a little ways to go with that, and overall, an interesting meeting for sure. Okay, so that was my big thing last week. Anybody else have anything? No? Okay, I will tell you, on Thursday, I'm going to do a proclamation for the Tuskegee Airmen. There's gonna be a little celebration up at the Space Center, and I'm looking forward to that. And then at our next meeting, April is Month of the Military Child, and so at our next meeting, if you remember, wear purple because we are going to be doing a proclamation for Month of the Military Child, so if you have purple... I know if I were to say that to my husband, he'd say, I don't own anything purple, but if you have something purple, wear it, so we can all celebrate the Month of the Military Child. And I think with that, I have nothing else. If anybody else has anything else? We will actually move on to item four now? Yes? All right. We're moving on to item four, consider an act upon approval of the annual reports from city boards and committees for fiscal year 2024. Stephanie, Dylan, anybody have anything to say about that?
I will go ahead and speak on the matter.
Okay, perfect.
So to give the commission some background on this item, at least once a year, every board and committee shall present a written report to the mayor and city commission of its activities, the member attendance, and also any recommendations as deemed appropriate. So tonight in the audience, we do have some members of the liaisons for these boards and committees. All their reports tonight will be from July 2023 to February 2024. And if we could go ahead and just take a small moment here, I believe we have the regional manager of BITS looking into the microphone issue before we get started with this item. If we could just take like a two-minute pause, that'd be fantastic.
All right, let's take a brief pause, two minutes, and let's see if we can get BITS to fix the mic. I am still getting texts that say we can't hear you and you're being cut off, and it's probably a good thing I was cut off because clearly I messed that one up, so we'll just take just a few minutes.
Dylan, can y'all just go ahead and have people come right here? We don't think there's a mic. Yeah.
Okay, can we go ahead?
If they can stand right here and they can see everybody.
Okay.
This is supposed to be happening on New York already. Something construction is supposed to be happening.
Okay, children, we're gonna get started.
So for those that did not hear, due to the podium microphone issues, we'll have our staff liaisons go right in front of City Manager Rick Holden over there. His microphone is working just fine, and that way the people at home can go in and hear all this. So to continue where I was at, we have the staff liaisons here in the audience tonight. So the way we're gonna proceed with this is each liaison will have three minutes to go ahead and present their written report, and then the commission will have the chance to go and ask questions as they wish, and then we'll continue on in that manner until this is concluded. So first up, we do have executive assistant Tony Gonzalez. Tony is a staff liaison for the airport advisory board and the airport zoning board.
My name is Tony Gonzalez. I am the liaison for the airport advisory board and the airport zoning board. The airport zoning board has not had a meeting in... I'm not quite sure how long it's been, but I've been the liaison for the last two years, and they haven't had a meeting at all. But I do know that we do need to keep that board present.
It's a legal requirement, yeah.
Yeah. The airport advisory board, we meet once a month, the first Thursday of every month, and those meetings are available in person or on Teams. So I do, I am able to send out the invite if any of you guys are interested in attending one of those to see how they are ran and what goes on at those. At these meetings, the airport advisory board just discusses recommendations about what goes on there at the airport, daily operations, anything that has to do with painters and man, any kind of improvements that they can think of, they're there to give advice. In the report is pretty much everything that's gone on throughout the whole year. If you have any questions on those, I'd like you to answer those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
We'll move on to the Alamo Gordo Disability Council and Stella Rayel has some information on that.
You just have a minute left. You're already just...
Time to sit down. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. I am Stella Rayel, your city planner and liaison for the Alamo Gordo Disability Council. This council was created by resolution in 1988. The purpose of the council is it shall be an advisory committee and is created for the purpose of reviewing city projects regarding ADA compliance. Members and requirements of disability councils shall consist of five members appointed by the city commission through application to the city for a term of two years. No more than two members may live outside city limits. Currently, I have three members on this board, and last meeting held, I became the liaison the first part of 2022. At that point, I had four members. This requires, this committee requires five. I had four. So we held our first meeting in May of 2022, so I could meet the existing board members and come up with a plan on when we were gonna meet. I finally ended up with a fifth member, so things looked like they were gonna go good. Well, we met, like I said, May of 2022. I didn't have a meeting June, July, or August of '22 for lack of participation from these members. There has not been any since that last meeting in May of '22, my first and final meeting, and so I have no activities for this annual report, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
I remember that this was a big deal to have this, and everybody really wanted this, and there was a lot of discussion. I think I remember showing, people showing up to a meeting, and they really wanted this, and my guess is they probably found out that they didn't have maybe as much authority as they thought they were going to, and that's why we have a lack of participation. So, you know, I don't know how we can proceed with that. Do we have to keep a committee?
I don't think they can do it.
Okay, so my recommendation is if, you know, obviously, the zoning board, I think because of, for legal reasons, we have to have that committee, but the rest of it, if we're not doing anything with it, if nobody's participating, I don't think the board is necessary, so that's just my thoughts.
Why don't we have staff after this? We did this a year or two ago. We used to have double this many, but look at all these boards and...
And then maybe tell us, yeah.
In the next couple of meetings, tell us if we have to have them or if we don't have to, and if they haven't met, like, you know, the mayor's youth advisory hasn't met since 2012, you know, so maybe at a future meeting, bring them to us, and if we don't have to have them, maybe we disband them.
We can certainly do that.
Or suspend them, you know, leave them there, but, you know, make them inactive.
You did that with the cemetery board the last time, and so obviously, we can do that, so we will look at those in the aggregate and try to give you a list. I think it's important to note that advisory committees, and you talk about what those responsibilities are, oftentimes, our advisory committees in every city, it's not just here, but every city, they sometimes do not understand that they are in an advisory capacity. They do not manage the operation, they don't set the hours, they don't establish the budget, they don't do any of those things, and sometimes folks do get disenfranchised with what their role is. And we have talked about this at our level, at the staff level, and we need to do some training, and we need to help those committees because we do value the time and effort that people want to put into those committees, and it's hard to get volunteers to do anything. So we wanna maximize the use of these microphones, I guess. We wanna maximize the opportunities to make those committees do good things so that you can make decisions somewhat based on the things that they advise you of.
Right.
And I also want to remind you that you have, the biggest advisory committee is our entire staff. We have people that are well-trained and well-qualified to help give you guidance and direction on things legally and things that need to be done, so always remember that, too.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that that's probably my biggest concern is that they need to understand they are just an advisory committee. That means that they don't get to order the staff around or bark orders at people, so not that I've heard that that's happening lately or anything, but just in case.
Well, we do wanna come up with some training.
Yeah.
And share that with them so that everybody will be on the same page, and we do appreciate the folks that do volunteer to do this job.
Right. All right, with that, we will move on to the Alamo Gordo Public Library Board.
You're not doing this next year?
Is this working now?
We will try it.
Wait, try, Mayor.
You wanna try it? I just thought his popped back on, so... Oh, there you go.
I'm Melissa from Alamo Gordo Public Library. I'm the liaison for the library board, and we have seven members, five county, no, five city, two county. We've met seven times out of the eight months, last eight months. There's a list of topics we have hit. Any questions? It's pretty, so...
Anybody have any questions? Sounds like a very active board.
They, they, they're active, yeah. They got opinions, yeah.
Don't we all? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the cemetery board. Do we have anybody here? Hello there.
Hello?
Oh, no one. You're good. She seemed a little nervous, what do you think?
She was happy inside.
She seemed a little out of her comfort zone. You shouldn't be doing that to them, Cam. What's the matter with you?
I know, I know.
Yeah, please. All right.
So real quick, just because the cemetery board is currently suspended and there's not much to talk about, can we do the cemetery board and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board right now?
Sure we can, you go right ahead.
Excellent. So, like I just said, so I'm Sven Sears, I'm the staff liaison for the cemetery board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Cemetery board, let's see, it consists of three members plus the city manager, is appointed representative as an ex officio member. It has been suspended for a few years, as I understand, and I have nothing to report on the cemetery board. So that being said, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, does anyone have any questions about the cemetery board first, before I move on?
Nope.
Excellent. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, on the other hand, we have had several different meetings to, for posterity purposes, it's to advise the city commission and the Parks and Recreation Department on matters related to parks recreation and open spaces within the city of Alamo Gordo. Five members are appointed by the mayor and two are appointed by the Alamo Gordo Public Schools. We are currently full and have been full since I've been with this board since March of last year. We've had several meetings, some with quorums, some without quorums, but otherwise, it has been a pretty quiet year, as far as I understand, with the Parks and Rec Board. So if anyone has any questions, please let me know. I'm here to answer them.
Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Okay, we will move on to the Community Development Advisory Committee. This is where I got my start. Did you know that?
Yeah, I saw that today when I was looking at the members.
Yeah, I saw that today when I was looking at the, the members from previous years. I'm Debbie Osborne. Good evening, everyone. And I, my annual report stated that the committee was originally formed to identify funding needs for the city and to provide citizen participation in the CDBG grant program. The committee was to help determine funding request priorities, attend public hearings to discuss funding needs up two, three times a year, and assist in door-to-door surveys to determine neighborhood income and funding eligibility. There were supposed to be seven members on the committee. The most I found that ever attended were five members. The last meeting was held in 2013, and when we were applying for our current CDBG grant, I had called DFA and Southern New Mexico Economic Development to see if this committee was necessary. They said that we were the only applicant that had this committee. It's nothing that they mandate. They do mandate public hearings, which we have. So really, there's not a need for the committee anymore if, unless one of you feel differently. In 2022, when it was discussed at the commission meeting, at the time, they decide, you decided that because we had a current CDBG grant right now, we really can't apply for another one till this one ends, and even then, we still don't need the committee. So whatever you think, but I don't think it's something we need because we have the public hearings.
Having heard that, I will wholeheartedly agree, and I've dealt with CDBG for many times, and there are more than sufficient public hearings to receive all of that input. And again, you've got a staff that understands CDBG and projects that are eligible, and certainly the commission has, has a role in helping determine and pick those projects. So between that and all the public hearings, I think that's just a committee that you really do not need. I agree.
Okay. Well, you can add that to the list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. The Mayor's Committee on Aging. Bless you.
What do you think?
Hello, Brittany, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm Brittany Ibarra. I'm the staff liaison for the Mayor's Committee on Aging. They meet once per month, and members typically work on items that would require city commission approval. These are larger items. For example, the last thing they were working on was trying to get a senior respite at the senior center, and that's really not feasible. Right now, I really do not see a need for the Mayor's Committee on Aging. So my recommendation would be to disband the committee. If you all have any questions, please let me know.
You can definitely add that one to the list as well. Thank you.
It's on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I felt like it probably was, so. Okay, thank you, Brittany. All right, next we have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board. I don't believe that this is an active board, and I don't even think there's anything to report with that.
Which one was that?
You've got that correct, Madam Mayor.
The Mayor's Youth Advisory Board.
I think when we did this the last time, pared all these down, there was a group at the high school that was starting to become active, but I guess they never did.
Yeah, I think that is the, what is that? The Interact Club or something like that? Something like that.
That was our reason for keeping it at the time.
Yeah, but I don't think it ever, it ever panned out, so I would just add it to the list, we can talk about it.
We'll review all these from the staff perspective and give you a complete list of recommendations for those.
Okay. All right, and last we have the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council. We did already cover the Parks and Rec, right? The kind of night I'm having, you just never know, so, but I believe we did cover that, so. Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council? How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good.
I'm Renee Rinnold.
I am the Senior Volunteer Programs Specialist. And the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council is one of the mandates that we have with our grants for senior companions and foster grandparents. We meet quarterly, and so we meet in January, April, July, and October. And we now have a full board. We have eight members, and then I've got one of my foster grandparents that is the liaison between them. So we're just kind of rebuilding from COVID, and they're doing good. So y'all have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I covered all of them. Did I miss anything? No? All right. We are going to move, oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah. Move on to item four, to Consider an Act Upon Approval of the Annual Reports. Do I have a motion to approve the annual reports?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, a motion passes seven zero. Finally, we are going to move on to item five, Adjourn into Executive Closed Session in Compliance with 10-15-1 to Discuss Pending Litigation Downtown Ventures. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Tapley. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Warren Robinson.
Aye.
Mark Tapley.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sherri McDonald.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank goodness.